Next on the item on the agenda is the mayor's report and the city council's subcommittee reports. I just want to thank everyone for their patience this evening as we convene our first in-person meeting since early spring 2020. As a reminder, masks are required for all unvaccinated individuals who wish to attend our meetings. And virtual participation will continue to be available utilizing the Zoom link provided in the posted agenda. The municipal operations subcommittee met last week with all members present. Items discussed that are not on tonight's agenda were, first, a traffic complaints that were relating to cars waiting for service at Prompto Oil. This issue had been discussed pre-COVID but had not been resolved. It was decided to reengage Prompto owners in a solution to the problem that might involve reversing the traffic flow through the base so that cars will enter the facility from Avon Street and exit onto Main. Twombly Road construction between Main and Shaw was discussed and it was decided to scrap the one-way road plan for many reasons. Instead, the road will remain two-way, but on-street parking will be prohibited. There is ample off-street parking for all residents on this small stretch of road. And this work is anticipated to commence next year. The committee also heard an update on the Midtown, Midtown Mall CDBG project. This project is still in the bid negotiation process, is expected to proceed, but does not yet have a start date. The land bank committee met and reviewed various properties of concerns. The city council will have dangerous building public hearings on four properties at their August 3rd meeting, just as a warning for you all. And that's it? I think we have a... Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, sure. Okay, is that okay? Is that better? It should be working just fine. It's not coming through on the audio? Really? Okay. What do you think, Ben? I mean, because I don't like to usually get too close because... It could be, but I, you know. Okay. It's fine on that, so it's probably just in here. Okay. We'll get it figured out. Why don't we just, while we're doing this, we can just continue? You have a, I know that there's a solid waste subcommittee report.
Yep, I just have a couple of, a couple of items. Solid Waste Subcommittee did meet last Tuesday. And we discussed EcoMain's recycling tagging program, which is a pilot program we're gonna try here in Sanford, where some employees from EcoMain, they're our, they pick up our recycles and they're going to choose about 200 households on a, on a rotating basis, daily basis. And they're, they're going to take a look in everyone's recycle bin. They're not gonna stick their hands in or do anything. They're gonna look from the side and look in the recycle bin. And if they see an item that's in the bin that is not appropriate for recycling, something like garden hose, or rope, or plastic bags, things like that, they're gonna put a notification on the outside of the bin that says that that particular item should not be in there. And so this is an education program. So we're trying to educate people to do the best job they can in getting the appropriate items into their recycling bin. Because our hope is that eventually we'll have those roadside containers. And we want to get people so that, trained in a sense, so that they learn not to put inappropriate items in their recycle bin, which we have to pay a contamination fee for. The community pays a contamination fee. Currently, EcoMain employees actually take a look in the recycle bin. So they're helping us out in that way. And this is a further attempt to educate the populace on what belongs in the recycle bin. So that when we go to a roadside bin that has a top on it, no one's gonna be able to inspect what's inside that bin. And we won't get hit with large contamination fines, if you will. People will be educated and, again, we'll, we'll avoid those fines, which can be substantial for the community. We also had a quick discussion on trash receptacles at takeout restaurants. Some members of the Solid Waste Committee are seeing a trend of some of the takeout restaurants reducing the number of trash receptacles in their parking area. And that concerns us a little bit, that there, again, some are major contributors to the trash we have in the community and they should be managing their own trash themselves, not having the citizens take that on or the city take that on. So that's in discussion and we're, we're looking at how we can reverse that trend. So those are the two items that we had on the Solid Waste Subcommittee.
Thank you, Councilor Steffel. Anybody have any questions, any Councilor's questions? Okay, city managers' report.
I don't have a formal report for you tonight, but I do want to convey information from our city clerk, Sue Cody. So this pertains to nomination papers. Nomination papers will be available starting Friday, July 23rd, 2021. The following positions are open. There are two city council members for three-year terms. Those are incumbents Lucas Landigan and Hanselman. There's one school committee member for a three-year term, the incumbent of which is Donald Jameson. One trustee for the Sanford Water District for a three-year term. The current incumbent is John Cochin, Cochin, sorry.
Oh, yeah, you know that?
I did not have him as a teacher. I did not, no. And one trustee for the Sanford Sewer District, three-year term, incumbent Paul Demers. So to qualify for municipal office candidates must be registered voters with a principal place of residence in the city. They will need to obtain a minimum of 50 signatures of registered voters in Sanford Springville. For trustees of the Sanford Water District or Sewer District, they only need 25 signatures of registered voters. The deadline to file the nomination papers is Thursday, September 2nd, 2021 by 4:30 p.m. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, communications and presentations, 21-354-01. Quarterly report and presentation from the Director of Sanford Regional Economic Growth Council. Mr. Nyman, welcome.
Thank you. I feel a bit like a guinea pig here, the first to the podium, right? So I'm pleased to be here, see you guys in person tonight. My name is Jim Nyman, Director for the Economic Growth Council. Mayor Mistracchio, Deputy Mayor Hurley, and members of the city council. I wanted to start tonight by just providing a special thanks to Councilor Hanselman. During the first round of the Payroll Protection Program, as a 501(c)(6) nonprofit, the Growth Council was not eligible. I didn't pay enough attention in round two, but Councilor Hanselman did and pushed over a pretty serious sounding note that we should take a good, close look second time. And we did, and we were eligible for a grant through that second round, so thank you for that. I've got a couple administrative things as well as some project notes that I want to provide to you tonight. First of all, is around the Growth Council's reorganization. We've been working on that since last fall. And we've had a number of board meetings since that time, a lot of conversations. Ultimately, a resolution that reduced our original partners from three to two, which was approved. And that really has led us to the drafting and the approving and signing of a new memorandum of understanding that was signed in late June by the two parties, and both the city and the IDC. The IDC's lawyers now drafting up amendments to bylaws and articles from corporation that will be presented to the board at our August meeting. Just some quick highlights for the community in terms of what's happened in that transition, in that reorganization. Board membership for the, for the Growth Council has increased from seven to 11. The city's mayor or designee, as well as city manager, will be on that board. There will be a city appointment for a small business employer as well. There'll be two IDC board members. There'll be an IDC appointment for an industrial or a large employer. And then both partners will look at some categories of the additional five partners to include regional finance or banking sectors, business support services, building development, higher rate, or workforce development, as well as housing development. So they've got a good mix of different sectors that'll participate on that board in 2021 going forward. As far as the mission and the purpose of the Growth Council, there have been some tweaks to that as well. We continue to have business attraction as a key item for us. We've added a tweak to that of both small and large employers to emphasize that. Business expansion remains in our mission, as well as entrepreneurship, some tweaking of that, but really entrepreneurial support for companies that want to establish themselves, startups. There's also a new item for public-private partnerships and investment, again, a focus point for the Growth Council. Certainly, if you look at the initiatives that we've undertaken in over the past five, six years, public-private partnerships matter to us. We want to keep focusing on that as we, as we put projects together. Business retention is still there. We have companies here that we, we hope to work with to make sure that they grow within their markets. A couple of new items, business advocacy and permitting has been added, again, as a focus point, especially for our small companies to ensure that they can find their way through this development process. We know that the larger companies bring an arsenal of consultants to the table. We want to make sure the Growth Council, that small business receives that advocacy as well in the permitting process. And then finally, information coordination, marketing. I'll talk more about the role that we played and that contract that's ended. But we look forward to, to working with the city's new communications coordinator. As far as staff for the Growth Council going forward, there will be an executive director, as well as a small business advocate, which will be acted upon later tonight by the, by the city council. The duties of those two positions, the different mission and purpose that I've talked about, those particular items will be worked out between those two positions through the mutual consent of the two parties, both the IDC and the city. So that review is ongoing. We expect to have more to, to work with for drafts at the August board meeting. Just a quick note on the, on the EDA grant, right? Most of us thought it was great to get that back in 2016. Steve and I, Lee Burnett and others worked closely to get that money, get it secured for us to help support the Sanford Net Fiber Project. We have spent a lot of time, I say "we," really city manager's office and the treasurer's office, getting a ton of information out to the federal, our federal partners in Philadelphia. Due to some staff changes, due to COVID-19, we're on our third project manager in Philadelphia right now. That office, that headquarters, has been closed for over 18 months. There is no reopening date that I'm aware of yet. And so our third project manager, God bless him, has not seen any of the two piles, the two reams, really, of paperwork that we sent down there. He and his supervisors don't have access to hard copies. So working with Paula when she was here, with Mary Hastings in my office, as well as Aaron, we put together that package and he submitted it so that EDA would have access to it electronically. The, it's really led to a series of calls. We now believe, based on a couple of conference calls that we hosted at the Growth Council, that as of tonight, I can say to you with close to full confidence that, that we'll be getting at least 90% of that money wired to us later this week or early next. So stay tuned for that. We're all on high alert, anxious to get that in our hands as we close down that construction project, as you know, in the fall of 2019. EDA likes to close down their grants within a five-year period, which will be September of 2021. So we hope to make sure that happens. We'll work on that last 10% with the city manager's office and pull in those additional funds. So stay tuned. Good news so far. Around the Stenton Mill, I wanted to highlight for you quickly that the wind development has in fact put a pre-application in front of Main Housing. They have, they have walked through some of the key items for themselves as they, as they approach Main Housing for some of the traditional funding for a project like this. They've described the project, many of us are familiar with what's there, what's left there since the fire. They've described the site being near Number One Pond, consisting of a five-story mill building, a barn, approximately an acre where the West Tower used to be. There's only a cement slab there now. They've also laid out, you know, their plans initially to that site. There's about 107,000 square feet remaining of interior space currently vacant. They certainly identified for Main Housing the city's strong support for this project and they've been in regular contact with me over the past year. They have also laid out their, their financing plans. Again, it's, it's the capital stack that you imagine for this. It's gonna take a lot of tax credits, both the, the income tax credits as well as the historic credits, federal, state. So again, it's a, it's a series of resources that have to come together for this project. It'll be significant, obviously also making the plug for housing. Where a regional employer, as you guys know, send a lot of individuals out to different places, companies within our region. Housing is a shortage. I don't have to talk too much about that tonight. But again, a great opportunity to adaptively reuse a historic building to get support for that. You should also know that I made an appeal to the York County Commissioners, we're here in late June, holding a public hearing on what we do with $40 million that we get from our... We made the case that they should focus on two things and use a service center like Sanford around an existing project. We identified Stenton Trust to them and the need for possible, what I would call non-traditionals, not the stuff inside the box for Main Housing, but some additional housing money for that project. Also made a push for broadband, let them know of our, of the, you know, the major fiber backbone that we have here and our interest in extending that to, to additional employers. So again, laid that out to them in testimony late June. Stay tuned, they're working through that process as we speak. While I'm talking about Sanford Net, you should also know that we helped with a series of info sessions with GWI. So we, the panelists with the Growth Council, GWI staff, we co-hosted three of those sessions in March, April, and June. We're trying to reach what we're calling the SNF, Sanford Net Fiber 250. So those companies that are along the fiber backbone. We are looking to expand our service to those companies. We knew from the earliest survey that we presented to you that only 28% of respondents understood Sanford Net Fiber and the services that were provided. Another 38% had only heard of the name. So our challenge was to dig a bit deeper and ensure that there was, there was more understanding of that, of that opportunity. Our goal really is to, is to reach those targeted companies and to connect them to that high-speed business network. We did a, an incredible amount of outreach through social media. I did a short video pitch. We did direct email to companies. We did a weekly post guide for the month of June. We didn't get the turnout that we had hoped for with that outreach, but we've also started down a process at the end of the month, working with a company that, whose focus really is helping us peel back each of these companies, understand better how they use the internet presently. Their research, national research tells them that, quote, "70% small to medium-sized businesses underutilize the internet connection that they have available." These businesses can benefit by understanding which online business applications will help them grow. So they have something called the Small Business Growth Kit. We're working with them to try to nail down a, a contract that will help us reach at least a sampling of that Sanford Net 250. So we've got an extension on the Connect Me Authority money, the grant that we have. It's gonna run through December right now, so we'll work with that company during that period, again, to enhance the use of the network. I wanted just to give you a snippet of two things that are going on. I don't want to provide a lot of information tonight, but there's a major agriculture project that we're working on. The past 18 months, I've worked with both Maine and European principals on this project. It really is to attract the high-tech agricultural project to Sanford. It's greenhouse construction for tomatoes cubes and peppers initially. We have very preliminary conversations with both planning and codes to give reassurance to these developers that what they want to do in the spot that they want to do it is, is legal and possible and encouraged and all those boxes are checked. So their business plans are in place. They're working with investors to secure property and financing. And I will update you with more details as we make our way through that. The other item that's of interest is commercial subdivisions, which I don't think have happened during the 10 years I've been here. And so we, you guys are familiar with the IDC's interest in the tech park. Those conversations continue with additional meetings in July and August. As well as, we, we met, the Growth Council met with a developer at our, at our June board meeting to look at a commercial subdivision opportunity that they were exploring. Again, it's a high-level conversation right now and I'll provide you more details as that takes shape. And then two other quick things, Friends of Downtown, we should mention tonight. We had, you guys know, had met over the last couple of years, the Growth Council and, and as an ad hoc group with a bunch of different city officials. We brought in companies sometimes, we brought in residents sometimes, just to sort of do a lay of scope of what's going on up here in the downtown. Started to capture in one place in some PowerPoint presentations. Matt Hill's work, Midtown Mall work, the housing developments that have been popping up around our downtown. But again, and we were thinking, if you guys recall, about a long-term approach, maybe even later this year, early next, starting to think about getting Sanford involved again in the Main Street program. I think we stepped back a little bit from that and, and started to think more organically. Do we have businesses? Do we have residents? Do we have people with a vested interest willing to step up and sort of lead us into this next step if it's going to be one? And so really, under Lee Burnett's leadership and Councilor Hanselman, we, we've stepped up and supported this shift from sort of this long-term Main Development Center approach, Main Downtown Center approach, to really what could we do in the short term for projects? And so Ann and her husband Jeff have been very generous with their fanny space to host regular meetings. I would say objectively that these Friends of the Downtown are showing some enthusiasm. The group is growing organically, which is what we had hoped. And our initial plans call for adding some family amenities, things like art activities for kids, some live music, to the Police Department's National Night Out Event in Central Park on August 26th. And again, rumors persist about a dunk tank and a possible appearance by Mayor Mistracchio. We're just gonna have to wait and see how all that, all that shakes out. But it'll be a great time for the community that, that night. And then finally, I wanted to mention quickly the marketing report. Some of this may not be news to you, but in the final Cuneli report that covered the past quarter, we did do extensive promotion of One Eagle Drive, as you recall. We started that in the fall of 2020 into the spring of 21. It led us to be able to announce both packaging, a significant regional company signing a lease and doing their expansion in Sanford at One Eagle Drive. Just to note, we got significant coverage from WGME 13, from Main Biz, from local Sanford News. WGME also did a very positive news story in May, talking to local residents. Maybe you haven't seen that, how they were spending their day since it was so nice out. Remember, it was nice in May and it was very pleasant. And there were families out walking around Number One Pond, shopping downtown, et cetera. And it really captured the beauty of our community and a positive news story, which I was looking for, right? We also, as I mentioned, did significant outreach with GWI. We continued to reach out to business owners regarding updates on COVID-19, grant programs, back-to-work programs, all those things through social media and our e-newsletter. We continued to promote local business, things to do, nonprofit organizations, events on social media. And by boosting the posts on social media within a 50-mile radius, we were able to reach an average of 15,000 views each month. To give you an example, we promoted Meaty Thai Restaurant. We had 98 likes, 27 positive comments, eight shares, and 2,648 people reached during that outreach. Our summer branding video ran on WMTW 8 and the CW promoting the Sanford Mainers. Yay, they're back. Our high school and technical schools, outdoor trails, main water attractions, ski teams, swimming destinations. Again, those sort of things that were going on through the late spring and summer for our community. And then finally, from Jen, she wanted to thank you, city council, the Growth Council's board of directors, Jim and Mary, and wishes us well and success in the future. With Jen's contract ending June 30th, again, we look forward to working with the city's new communications coordinator to make sure that we keep getting the word out around business attraction, workforce attraction, and tourism attraction. And with that, Mayor Mistracchio, I would end my report.
Thank you, Mr. Nyman. Are there any questions from councilors? Councilor Tuttle?
Mr. Nyman, you know, a lot of folks on the east side, as I mentioned before, very concerned about the Stenson Trust building and developing that. I mean, we've heard the same stories for the last 40 years and talking about a timeline on how we're doing something there, you know, in the neighborhood. You mentioned that we are working with a company that is addressing redevelopment, but, you know, I've heard the same arguments for the last 40 years of hoping that, at least from the folks I listen to on Sanford East Side, hoping that we're not, you know, doing the same thing five years down the road. So we're sort of looking for performance and a timeline where we might get something done.
Oh, ye have little faith. Some of you have met David Gamble, the architect. I've seen some of his schematics for that, for that area. There's a, there's a lot of work that's gone into that. Again, it's gonna come down to financing, Councilor Tuttle, and, and we're in process now. Those of us that have the scars from Brady Sullivan know that you can go through an 18- or 20-month period. You can lay all the ducks in order and, and you might not make something happen. However, you know, that said, we've got a very, very talented developer with a very full portfolio. The word I get one-on-one is that they could do the Stenton Trust project in New York, New Jersey, Massachusetts, a number of states that they've done these projects, and they could do Stenton Trust all day long. So we're trying to do a dance and figure out, is it possible through the regular financing that's available? And possibly some help from, from our regional group to see if we can't make this thing happen. I'm looking at my notes. I meant to mention that right now, they, if, if things go as planned, construction will be anticipated to start in early '22 and be complete within a 14-month period. So that's, that's the, the plan for that. But we've got some steps to get through.
I know that Deputy Mayor Hurley is very active as far as wanting to do something there. I know you talked last year about that and I think for the neighborhood, we really need to, if there is gonna be a priority for, I know we all are for downtown development, but I would hope that the Stenson Trust would, would be a priority, particularly for that area of town, getting things rolling. I'm just afraid that, I don't want to see another fire happening.
Amen.
Thank you, Councilor Tuttle.
Just saying that I've heard very positive things about wind development. My sister, who's in Boston, she does zoning down there. So I actually think this is a good partner. I think we have good potential with this. I'm happy about it.
Thank you.
That's good.
And I will just add that if there was ever a time when there's money available for housing, this is it. So I honestly feel that if we work it right, we will be the recipient of some of that housing.
And I would also be remiss when I publicly thank you, Mayor Mistracchio, for your efforts behind the scenes. So far, the developer has said things are going well. Thank you for your offer of help, so we can all circle back.
We will keep working on it. It takes a lot of us to do this.
Appreciate that.
Councilor Hanselman? And just two quick things. One, Jim, you mentioned the transition period we're in as a Growth Council, so thank you for that. And I just want to give a shout out to our existing board members who have put energy and time into the Growth Council up to this day and I want to extend appreciation for that. And then also, I've really been enjoying the Growth Council's Facebook posts and restaurant posts. You mentioned one. And so if folks aren't following it, you can look for Stanford Growth on Facebook and it is a great resource, so thank you for that also.
Okay, I think we're all set.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Next item on the agenda is public participation. Is the list up there, Larissa? Do you want to? Somebody probably over there could actually look at the list and tell us that there's anybody on it.
Got a few calls from folks. Better mail it. Mention they might be here.
Nobody? Okay, so there's no one here that... Okay, just one second. Oh, okay, one sec. Let me just, there's no one in here that wants to participate in public participation? So is there anyone that's on Zoom? No. Okay. Deputy Mayor Hurley, you have a comment?
So I think someone's watching on television commented that we don't see your faces. So how does the television work? Does it go back and forth between the faces and the data for the agenda item? And they, they said all we're hearing is your voices and not seeing your person.
What you, what you see on the TV screens here, that's what they're seeing at home.
And what we're seeing on ours right now.
When I was switching back and forth between Directors Nyman's, Nyman's presentation from time to time, I'd pull up the visual slide. That's what the Zoom people are seeing. People at, at home saw that same visual slide with the support information, but they're also gonna see the Zoom participants on the sidebar there. So like right now, you're in the full, full shot of the council chambers, as you see here on the TVs.
It'll go back and forth? It'll go back and forth between our photos and data that we're showing people so they can see the same information we're seeing. But you're not always gonna see us, you might just hear our voices. So maybe that's one of the ways we make sure we identify ourselves when we're speaking, if we're not visual. if we're not visual.
That's, I am trying to call on people, but I think the problem might be that people are used to seeing us on Zoom and seeing this big face, so I'm kind of happy. I like it like this just fine. Okay, public hearing. City Council will take public comments on the following. 21-347-01, a public hearing to receive comments in favor or against a new application submitted by Afterglow Edibles for marijuana manufacturing facility Tier One Adult Use at Nine Renaissance Way, Sanford, Maine. I will declare the public hearing open. Is there anyone to speak in favor? Is there anyone to speak against? I will declare the public hearing closed. 21-363-01, a public hearing on proposed changes to the City Council rules of procedure to incorporate new rules regarding remote participation in public proceedings pursuant to 1 MRSA Section 403B. Steve, is there anyone to speak in favor, but I would appreciate that this might be the time where you want to present this?
Let me get down to the information clues.
Okay.
Right, I need the backup for it.
Oh. Do you want? I actually have the backup on paper.
I have it.
You want this? Larissa?
I have it.
He's got it? Okay.
So under consideration tonight, subsection six of the City Council rules of procedure are under consideration for amendment. What is being incorporated in there is a new subsection to allow for remote participation in public meetings. So that's what we're testing out for the first time tonight. So for example, tonight, we have the multimedia presentation equipment here. We're not running our ultimate software, but we're running OBS studio for this evening. So at this moment, we're pushing out over Town Hall streams, a Town Hall stream, Zoom, YouTube, as well as our public education channel, Channel 26 on Atlantic Broadband. And Zoom, when Comcast comes in, you'd be pushing on another public access channel as well. That being said, the state legislature, currently we're still through July 30th of this year, we could be doing completely remote meetings up until July 30th. This is our first live broadcast, do the hybrid. Under the law that was recently passed by the state legislature, once that emergency legislation lapses at the end of July, the new law provides only four allowances for the elected or appointed officials to participate electronically, otherwise they must be live. So pursuant to our rules of procedure, the state law has been incorporated in here. So under the new subsection 6A, remote participation in public meetings, public proceedings, we have adopted the new state law of 1 MRSA 403B, which required that we have a public hearing on this this evening. That's why we're performing the public hearing this evening. And then the council is anticipated to adopt this new amendment by policy this evening, make it part of the rules of procedure. It will be applicable to all of the City Council, the Planning Board, Board of Education, Zoning Board of Appeals, and Board of Assessment, as well as the subcommittee meetings. There will be four allowances whereby individuals who are on those various boards can participate That would be the existence of an emergency or an urgent issue. So if an emergency meeting is called and there's a time to assemble, we can still do a fully electronic meeting, but it must be called under emergency session. If an elected or appointed official has illness or other physical condition or temporary absence from the jurisdiction that causes a member of the body facing significant difficulties traveling to and attending a person, then at the location pursuant to 1 MRSA 406, as a public notice has been provided, then that person can Zoom in. So we're gonna use the Zoom platform. If an elected or appointed official Zooms in, you must allow the same to happen for the public. So even though we have no elected officials Zooming in here this evening, we still have the hybrid going. Members of the public are connected by Zoom. We have a number of on here this evening. If they need to speak, raise their hand, you'll be able to hear them in the room. We'll switch the screen over to the Zoom. You'll be able to see them as well and be able to have that interaction. So let me cap it there. As far as the participation is concerned, so there's four elements in here that you're allowed to Zoom in by, provided that you have the meeting set up accordingly, in accordance, but you still must have a quorum of the body present here live. So that would be the amendments going forward in the future, and we anticipate to utilize those for all the committees that I, meetings that I had previously referenced, as well as subcommittee meetings as well.
Thank you. Is there anyone else to speak in favor? Or anyone to speak against? Did you see somebody? You can't hear this? Really? Maybe it's just my mic. Because I'm certainly not the soft speaker here. I will just speak louder. Is that better? Because honestly, that, I shouldn't have to speak that loud with this mic, because I know that you all aren't. It could just be this, I got the bad mic.
Broke your mic, Madam Mayor.
I mean, I've never been known for speaking softly, so. Okay, so anyone to speak against? Then I'll declare the public hearing closed. Consent agenda, 21-348-01. If, seeing no objection, the consent agenda will be approved as written. Old business, none. New business, 21-365-01, recognition of Police Chief Thomas P. Connolly Jr. for his service to the city of Sanford. I'll ask Chief Connolly and I think the wife to come on up. Come on, appear at the podium. We have a couple of presentations for you this evening, so go right over there at the podium, because that's where the camera will catch you.
I brought my beautiful wife of 45 years.
So we have a couple of presentations this evening, and I'm gonna start. I have a proclamation honoring Thomas P. Connolly Jr., July 20th, 2021. Whereas Thomas P. Connolly Jr. has served the community of Sanford, Maine as Chief of Police since July 12th, 2007, and whereas he was raised in Melrose, Massachusetts, where he met his wife Donna, to whom he has been married for 45 years, and with whom he has three sons, and whereas he has a bachelor's degree in business administration with a concentration in management from American Intercontinental University and a master's degree in psychology from Walden University, and whereas he served for six years in the military before being hired by the U.S. Capitol Police in 1980, and then by the Prince George's County, Maryland Police Department in 1982, and whereas he served from 1982 to 2007 in the Prince George's County, Maryland Police Department, where he was promoted to senior management rank through a series of increasingly responsible law enforcement positions, and where he served for over 11 years at the rank of captain and major, and whereas in his career, he has earned over 50 combined awards, certificates, letters of commendation and appreciation, including the Award of Merit in 1994 and the Silver Medal of Valor from the Prince George's County Police in 2004, and whereas he oversaw the successful construction of a new station for the Sanford Police Department, which was completed in 2010, and whereas he championed a community-based policing model in Sanford and established Sanford's annual National Night Out Police Community Cookout Event, allowing the community to get to know and interact with their police force in a relaxed and enjoyable setting, and whereas he is a passionate about evidence-based treatment for opioid use and wrote and published an informational booklet with answers to the most common questions regarding heroin use and abuse, and whereas his 14 years of dedicated service to Sanford and Springville have made a difference in our community and have been appreciated by his colleagues and the city council, and whereas his leadership as chief has fostered a command structure and succession plan within the department for the long-term preservation of operations and dedicated service of law enforcement within the city of Sanford. Now therefore, the City Council of the City of Sanford, Maine, on behalf of the citizens of Sanford-Springville, does hereby extend our appreciation to Police Chief Tom Connolly in recognition of a job well done and with our best wishes for a happy retirement. Now, we have something else. Councilor Tuttle? Representative, and he's going to be in his representative role right now.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I've got to know the chief as a friend and an ally, and Tom, I remember where we were before you came on board, and we really needed to have a change. I had been recommending that for years, and I think that the changes that you made to our community are going to be long-lasting, and you're gonna be a very difficult individual to replace. So on behalf of the governor and the people of the state of Maine, I'd like to present you with this resolution that said, be it known to all that we, the members of the Senate and House of Representatives, join in recognizing Thomas Connolly Jr., I'm a junior to Tom, and I'm proud of it, of Sanford, who is retiring as chief of Sanford Police Department after 14 years of dedicated service as chief and 41 years of law enforcement service overall. We extend our congratulations and best wishes and be ordered that this official expression of legislative sentiment be sent forthwith on behalf of the 130th Maine Legislature and the people of the state of Maine. That's signed by Senator President Troy Jackson, Speaker of the House Brian Fecto, I was the sponsor along with Senator David Woodson of York, Matthew Harrington, who was a police officer, and Patty Hyman, and Tom, I want to thank you for the years that you've given us, the friendship that you've given me. Your door has always been open, Tom. I've always called you, and you've always answered me. I hope your replacement can do the same, Tom, but I'd like to come up and present this to you and your wife, if I might, Madam Mayor.
Not a picnic. I don't think. It's still fun stuff. We'll have to open it now, but I think it's all stuff. I don't know if you'll...
Thank you.
Good stuff.
Thank you very much, Madam.
Well, Thomas, I'm still working on your $10,000 bonus. Give me a few more years. It is. From one Irishman to another, they always say you can always tell an Irishman, but you can't tell much, but you're gonna be Irish to say that. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Okay, 21-364-01, ordered to confirm the city manager's... Can you hear me now? I just want to make sure I'm loud enough. I'm looking at you because you're the one that keeps shaking your head. Now, maybe it's your ears. I know men don't like to hear that, but maybe it's just you. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to...
What's your hearing?
Right, yes, but I think he actually might want to hear tonight, though, so I'm assuming. Okay, so 21-364-01, ordered to confirm the city manager's appointment of Craig L. Anderson to the position of chief of the Sanford Police Department pursuant to Section 402.3 of the Sanford City Charter. We'll have a presentation first, and then we will do the motion afterwards, okay? So how are you gonna do this? Are you in charge, city manager?
I'd like to go through the history and the information that I have in the memorandum that I submitted to the Council back, because I believe it's very important for the public to know the extensive process that we went through that brought us to this juncture here today. So as far as history, first, Chief Thomas Connolly, after 14 years of dedicated service and exemplary service to the Sanford Police Department, as chief, announced his retirement to be effective as of July 23rd, 2021. Chief Connolly having provided six months' notice of retirement, administration performed a national search for the position. Mayor Mistracchio also appointed a 22-person search committee to provide input into the city's and department's needs in the next chief. Search committee comprised of police and union representation, citizen representation, administration, and city council representation, was polled on attributes desired in our next chief above qualifications as a law enforcement officer, but also in the areas of community Recruitment and retention, leadership, communication, and community involvement, envisioning, and long-range planning for the department. The results of the survey, combined with the administrative qualifications, were utilized to develop an oral board process for the police candidates. 14 well-qualified candidates submitted to the city. These initial 14 candidates were scored for education, progressive experience, knowledge of law enforcement and credentials, modern law practices, administrative experience, and of similar indoor larger departments for all technical capacity to lead the department. 35 out of 60 points were assigned to technical capacity. The remaining 25 points were assigned to knowledge of Maine law ordinances and demonstrated community policing contained within their resume, communications and public relations, and qualifications best fitting for the department. The top five candidates were selected from the field of the 14 candidates for the first oral board interview process. After notification and scheduling, one of those five candidates withdrew, leaving us with four highly qualified candidates to interview. The first oral board process focused primarily on technical capacity in law enforcement, leadership, administration, and community policing. The oral board was comprised of Mayor Mistracchio, Councilor Hanselman, Sanford Fire Chief Benati, Human Resource Director Howes, two police chiefs, Chief McKenzie of Kennebunk and Chief Putnam of Wells, and myself as the city manager. It was a unanimous decision to advance two of the four candidates to the second round of oral boards. The second round of oral boards focused predominantly on best fit for the department's current and future needs. The oral board focused on recruitment and retention, community policing such as drug interventions, licensed clinical social workers, insertions into the department, specialization into a civilianization of positions, continuity, and a vision for the department. Second oral board was comprised of Mayor Mistracchio, Councilor Hanselman, Deputy Chief Strout, Lieutenant Gagné, HR Director Howes, and City Manager Bock. Based upon the outcomes of the second oral board, a unanimous recommendation was made for Craig L. Anderson. Qualifications for Officer Anderson, he is a BA in criminal justice from Husson University. He is a Maine Criminal Justice Academy graduate instructor, firearms instructor, use of interactive force instructor, municipal ordinance prosecutor, SWAT instructor, NTOA SWAT supervision and management. He's had the FBI Law Enforcement Executive, as well as Trilogy Court Study and awards in the same, and he's currently the commander of the Southern Maine Special Response Team, as well as serves as our current... He has thirty-two years of combined service to the Sanford Police Department from patrol, criminal investigation, and has served as a corporal and a sergeant, and is currently serving as our deputy, one of our two deputy chiefs for the department. D.C. Anderson has served in all capacities within the department, progressively serving in administrate- in administrative and law enforcement operations of the department. D.C. Anderson expressed the highest ability to provide continuity to operations while also expressing the greatest ability to implement major programmatic and operational changes within the department above all other candidates. Officer Anderson also has the support of the department as their next chief, as he has been serving the role of deputy chief for a period of months, producing notable results. It's noteworthy the elements of community policing that are being expressed since D.C. Anderson has been granted the authority to implement. Implementation of licensed clinical social workers into the department, community outreach, and his ability to partner with other police units and agencies has been outstanding. His knowledge and ability to accredit the department through the Maine Law Enforcement Accreditation Program or EMLEAP, and in the future to work towards the Commission on Accreditation for Law Enforcement on COLIA, is also a highly desired attribute. D.C. Anderson also expressed the greatest ability to internally promote the department with officer recruitment and retention programs during this extremely difficult time for law enforcement officers in their careers. Succession planning and departmental organization were also strong elements expressed by the chief candidate, Anderson. I would further note the exceptional communication and ability to connect with the public by D.C. Anderson. His life and career experience that allows him to be both a stringent law enforcement officer, as well as demonstrating the highest level of empathy for the diversity within our city, and the ability to problem-solve in areas around the law is exceptional. Therefore, pursuant to the Citizens Committee input, the national search, and oral board process, and given the exemplary qualifications of Deputy Chief Anderson, I hereby recognize his ability to lead the department, provide both community and operational change, implement a renewed level of community policing for homelessness, mental health, and drug addiction diversion. As city manager, I have had the opportunity to work with D.C. Anderson, performing the duties as a deputy chief for an extended period, further affirming his capabilities, capacities, and his ability to lead the department. So hereby, I request the city council affirm the appointment for the reasons that I have stated here in this memorandum. And thereby, I hereby appoint Craig L. Anderson as Sanford's next police chief, and formally request pursuant to Charter four-zero-two-point-three that the city council affirm this appointment to be effective as of July twenty-third, twenty-twenty-one. Thank you.
Would you like Deputy Chief to do his presentation first?
I would.
Okay. Then we will wait until that.
So, D.C. Anderson, would you come forward to do your presentation, please?
You're on the hot seat again.
Can you get off?
Nope.
So that was, that was quite, that was quite a lot to say. Quite a lot to say.
But it was easily said.
Thank you. I was asked to have a brief presentation this evening on some of the ideas and ideologies that we've put together with our team at the police department. I think there's going to be a PowerPoint presentation.
Okay.
Okay. Police Department, our vision. Our main goals are community policing. We want to put community back into the community policing routine. We want to empower the workforce, to create an investment in ownership, and the ideas and ideology that we're pushing forward. As Mr. Buck stated earlier, accreditation through EMLEAP and COLIA, as well as addressing recruitment and retention issues throughout law enforcement, especially here in Maine and in Southern Maine. When we talk about community policing, it really works best when the entire police department has ownership in the ideology behind it, and the membership is invested in accomplishing the community policing goals. So some of the ideas that we've brought forward primarily are developing community groups so we can open that communication, open the doorway to communication, and discuss with the community groups what the problems are in Sanford, and then try to find resolutions for those problems. If we don't listen to what the community says, then we won't be able to effectively address those issues. So I know in twenty-twenty, that was very difficult. COVID kind of shut us all down, and opening that dialogue was difficult. And I know it was a, it was a program that Chief Connolly had wanted to begin, and it kind of got stymied because of that issue. But now that we've come out of that, we're focusing on developing several groups within the elderly community, the business community, and then spanning the socioeconomic groups that we have in our community, as well as touching bases with the marginalized folks. What we discussed is a few times is that every voice matters, and unless we can listen to what the voices are saying and telling us, we really can't address those problems from a law enforcement standpoint. Things like cleanups and repairs in neighborhoods, as well as addressing crime and safety. We need to hear from the citizens who are, who are living through certain issues, and that will give us a better opportunity to address them. The police department will be open to business. I think Lieutenant Gagné posted on our webpage that we will invite community groups, as well as civic groups and youth groups. A mental health unit is, has been established, and we're staffing it in the next few weeks. And with that, we've come with a number of community partners that have really given this unit some credibility. What we really want to do is provide embedded clinicians within the police department to co respond with officers to folks in crisis or folks in need. The most police officers don't really have the tools to deal with all the different or the mental health crisis issues that arise, and our limited options isn't solving problems for folks within the community. So if we can bring clinicians in a safe manner and connect the two ends between the person in need and the clinician, then we'll solve more problems within the community. And we've made agreements with two universities, the University of Southern Maine and the University of New England, who have agreed to provide interns. These are degree program students, advanced degree program students, and they will work at the police department a certain amount of hours a week, respond with officers to help resolve some folks in crisis. Along this, with this, the state has partnered with us in the options program, and due to the generosity of Chief McKenzie in Kennebunk, it's going to allow us to base the options clinician. Sanford will have better resources at our fingertips to deal with some of the opioid issues that have, that continue to plague the state. One of the most important assets to this type of plan is that we'll have a case management and follow-up system with the, with the individuals who experience mental health crisis. Instead of the police showing up and then just going away, they'll be, will be tethered to the police department and tethered to the clinicians with follow-up. And again, I do want to mention that there's a lot of work behind the scenes going on, and Officer Small has really invested himself in this since we began the homeless outreach program, and it's kind of branched out from there. So although this is fledgling, it's, we've really got some traction right now, and we expect that we will have folks on the ground here in the next, well, by September when school starts, and the options clinician actually before that. We talked briefly about accreditation, EMLEAP and COLIA. Accreditation just keeps us honest, makes sure we're doing the right, the best practices for law enforcement, and our policies and procedures are, are consistent with contemporary law enforcement. And of course, recruitment and retention, difficulty throughout, probably the entire country, and not just with law enforcement, everybody's hiring. So we do compete with other agencies, but we compete with private industry as well. We do have forty sworn officers assigned to the police department and ACO and three civilian staff. Many of the, many of the officers work a significant amount of overtime to fill in for the three vacancies that we currently have, and then two long-term injuries. So being down between ten and fifteen percent of our staffing does require everybody to pitch in. I gotta tell you, they do an outstanding job. So the ways we can find to help minimize the impact of the community to make sure we're still providing services are technological advances such as online reporting, prioritizing calls for service, act, you know, requesting support from city government to better fund the things that we want to do with respect to online reporting and presenting information. And we've partnered with non-governmental entities as well, as we mentioned before, with the, with the behavioral health unit that should alleviate some, many of the officers' calls for service to the mental health issues at some point when the, when the program's up and running at full speed. And then in the future, we probably will begin to civilianize certain positions that that really don't require a sworn officer to have. I wouldn't anticipate that to happen for four or five years, but we have to be prepared for the exodus of officers as they retire, so putting in several plans to help deal with that has been our best choice so far. We're gonna, we're going to establish a recruitment team. Actually, the recruitment team's been established. Many of the guys are here this evening. And the recruitment team will travel throughout Maine and New England, attending career days and universities, and attempt to lure, entice applicants to come be police officers in Sanford. We also would like to revisit our collective bargaining agreement to make it more attractive as it becomes more competitive in the area. We look at increasing our specialties and opportunities, and as well as creating a reserve officer program, which we had at one point in the nineties, was, became unnecessary, but I think as we face these hiring issues in the future, we may have to revisit that again. And succession planning as well. It's important that the leadership of the police department coach and mentor and educate. We lead by example, and that we prepare the Sanford Police Department for the future. One of the, one of the promises I made to the council was that when I was ready to leave, that there would, there wouldn't, there shouldn't be a question on which direction the city should move. They should be able to look next door at the police department, see qualified people who are doing the job, doing the job well, so that the consistency that we have will continue, and you won't skip a beat. I did want to say just a couple of things. I would say thank you all, and I gotta tell you the most prevalent reason I'm here tonight is actually two reasons. One, I wouldn't, none of us would be here without our moms, so my mom is here.
Aww.
Let me try this again. Wave them. Mom now does what I say. The chief thing's working. I like it. And the other reason, really, it's specific to the occasion, it's for our great team, many of whom, many of who are here in the back. I gotta tell you that they had overwhelming support, and often it's been vocal, and if it hadn't have been for their vocal support, I wouldn't have applied for this position. And so their hard work, their support really made a difference, made a difference for me, and I appreciate that. Thank you. I can also tell you that we, as the police department, want to say thank you for the trust and confidence that you have in the police department, and I wanted to say from me, and to, to you and to them, that managers or executives, chiefs, leaders at all levels, we don't accomplish anything by ourselves. It's always the dedication and the commitment and the efforts of the team, which success almost always hinges. So even though you may hear from the leadership, it's the folks that are on the ground, boots on the ground, doing the work every day, that really make the difference, and that's something none of us should ever forget. And that's all I have to say about that.
Thank you. Deputy chief, so let's just get right to the motion. I will ask for a motion to approve and confirm the city manager's appointment of Craig L. Anderson to the position of chief of the Sanford Police Department.
So movement.
A motion by Counselor Tuttle.
Second.
And the second by Counselor Stackpole. I'm going to call the roll rather than ask for the vote, just to have it on the record, since I did get a message that some things are not coming through as, as just a voice, and so I would rather just, I think it was on YouTube. So Counselor Martel.
Yes.
Counselor Tuttle.
Yes.
Counselor Lanigan is absent with notice. Counselor Hanselman.
Yes.
Counselor Stackpole.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Herligh.
Yes.
And I am also a yes. Congratulations.
We have plenty of police that can take a report on that.
Okay.
I do want to move on to the, can I just move on to the next?
I think, and we need to swear you in first. So I think there's a little bit more to it, so I don't know how, who's handling this. Sue is here. Come on, come. Sue Cody.
Yep, Madam Mayor.
I think she's on, was on vacation and came back specifically to do this.
I know, and I told her, I feel bad.
I think you're gonna have to turn around and just, can you both, so that the camera...
Cameras on.
I know. Okay. Is that good? I mean, I just want to make sure everybody has a view of it, so thank you, Sue.
Raise your right hand.
Please raise your right hand.
I, Craig Anderson.
I, Craig Anderson.
I, Craig Anderson.
I, Craig Anderson.
Serving the town and now city of Sanford.
Serving the town and now city of Sanford.
Proudly for the last thirty-two years.
Proudly for the last thirty-two years.
And shall continue to follow my oath.
And shall continue to follow my oath.
That I took August seventh, nineteen eighty-nine.
That I took August seventh, nineteen eighty-nine.
As I start a new chapter of my law enforcement career.
As I start a new chapter of my law enforcement career.
I, in stating my name.
I.
solemnly swear.
Solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
Support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
United States.
And of the state of Maine.
And of the state of Maine.
So long as I shall continue a citizen thereof.
Long as I continue to be a citizen thereof.
And I will faithfully discharge.
And I will faithfully discharge.
To the best of my abilities.
Best of my abilities.
The duties incumbent upon me.
Duties incumbent upon me.
As the chief of police.
As the chief of police.
For the city of Sanford.
For the city of Sanford.
According to the Constitution and laws of this state.
According to the Constitution and laws of this state.
And in all respects.
All respects.
Shall observe the provisions of the charter.
Shall preserve the provisions of the charter.
And ordinances of the city of Sanford.
Ordnances of the city of Sanford.
Congratulations, sir.
I know. Okay, is that good? I mean, I just want to make sure everybody has a view of it, so thank you, Sue. Please raise your right hand. I, Craig Anderson.
I, Craig Anderson.
I, Craig Anderson.
I, Craig Anderson.
Serving the town and now city of Sanford.
Serving the town and now city of Sanford.
Proudly for the last thirty-two years.
Proudly for the last thirty-two years.
And shall continue to follow my oath.
Shall continue to follow my oath.
That I took August seventh nineteen eighty-nine.
That I took August seventh nineteen eighty-nine.
As I start a new chapter of my law enforcement career.
As I start a new chapter of my law enforcement career.
I, in stating my name.
I.
Solemnly swear.
Solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
Support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
United States.
And of the state of Maine.
And of the state of Maine.
So long as I shall continue a citizen thereof.
Long as I continue to be a citizen thereof.
And I will faithfully discharge.
And I will faithfully discharge.
To the best of my abilities.
Best of my abilities.
The duties incumbent upon me.
Duties incumbent upon me.
As the chief of police.
As the chief of police.
For the city of Sanford.
City of Sanford.
According to the Constitution and laws of this state.
According to the Constitution and laws of this state.
And in all respects.
All respects.
Shall observe the provisions of the charter.
Shall preserve the provisions of the charter.
And ordinances of the city of Sanford.
Ordinances of the city of Sanford.
Congratulations, sir. Okay, so the next item on the agenda is twenty-one dash three-six-seven dash zero-one. Promotion of Chad M. Allen to the rank of lieutenant in the Sanford Police Department. And we don't need a motion on this or anything, this is just a, there we go, so it's all yours, chief.
Former Sergeant Chad Allen, post. The city of Sanford and the Sanford Police Department has given special trust and confidence in your integrity, valor, leadership, and professional excellence. In view of these qualities in your dedicated service, you are therefore promoted to the rank of lieutenant. That's all I have.
Thank you. Good start. Right. Congratulations, Mom. Yeah, I don't think you have to leave yet, right, Chief? Aren't you on next on the agenda? That's right. Twenty-one dash three-three, three-six-six dash zero-one. Order to authorize an application for the twenty-twenty-one Justice Assistance Grant Funds in the amount of nineteen thousand forty-four dollars for the police department to be used by September thirtieth, twenty-twenty-four. We'll have a presentation on it first, Steve, if you want. We'll have the presentation and then we'll do the motion.
We have the backup information in the packet. Does DC Anderson care to present on this?
Unless he has somebody else that wants to do it. I'd just like the public to know what the plans are for the money.
Yeah, for sure. Is it gonna go up or am I gonna read it?
I'm grabbing it.
It's easier, isn't it?
Much easier. We should get like a teleprompter.
Hey, let me know. And you can figure out a way to pay for it. Actually, it's better up there because I would think that reading-wise, you don't need reading glasses.
Well, see, that's the thing, because I would normally.
Oh, okay.
My old eyes.
Were you set? Go ahead. Oh, is it up? No, it's not up there yet. We have to have a little patience. Steve is doing a really good job.
Well, I can start anyways while the, oh. The Justice Assistant Grant totals of nineteen thousand dollars, it's nineteen thousand and nine dollars for this, this round. And we have until, I believe it's twenty-twenty-four to expend it. The the items that we have placed are items that we normally wouldn't budget for and we wouldn't normally have the ability to to backfill with these items. So we gave it some careful consideration. As you know, some of the officers you saw this evening were wearing load-bearing body armor with pockets on the outside. We want to finish off the rest of the agency and be able to outfit the rest of the folks that would desire that. There is some, some evidence that it relieves some of the weight off the hips and it improves, will improve their posture and maybe they won't have as many back problems. But I can tell you, you carry a gun belt for thirty-plus years and it does start to, start to weigh on you. So I think it's thirty-seven, thirty-seven hundred and ninety-five dollars that we have towards equipment, which includes the external vests, some duty gear accoutrements that go with it, flashlights. And then, as you may notice, some of the officers, well, myself included, we don't have like a dress uniform of any type. So they were wearing their regular duty uniforms. Now, if they were going to a graduation academy, I don't really think that represents the city so well, you know, so we want them to be able to have something that they could wear a tie and look a little more professional at some of those events. And so we have some money dedicated to that as well. And we think that over the course of the next several years, we'll be able to outfit the entire agency, but this will give us a jumpstart on that. And I think the next item is supervisory development and supervisory education. I mentioned to you before that the FBI leader classes are extremely valuable for the officers and we want our, even our younger, newer patrol officers to attend the first level to help change the culture in the agency so that everyone understands where where our leadership is going to go. And so we have ten slots and it's about six hundred and ninety-five dollars a slot, so it's six, six thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars. National Night Out, it's coming up. We've got twenty-five hundred dollars dedicated to that. You cannot use that for food, but you can use it for for other things, such as, we have handouts and with the purchase t-shirts and there'll be other things that we can give out to the community as they arrive. Recruitment, we have developed a recruitment team and we have contracted or we explored contracting with a company that will, that will make a video to advertise the police department and perhaps maybe increase the amount of applicants that we receive. And that again will have, when they go to these locations and recruit, they'll have some, some items to hand out and kind of have that name recognition. I think that's pretty much totals it all.
Any questions from the council? Do I have a motion?
A movement.
Motion to approve by Counselor Tuttle. Second by Counselor Martell. Any other discussion? All those in favor, raise of hands. That is unanimous of all those present. Thank you. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, thank you.
Think you're done?
Thank you.
Twenty-one dash three-five-one dash zero-one. Ordered to see what percentage of unencumbered appropriation the city council will vote to permit the city manager to transfer with city council approval from one account to another within the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two budget, according to Charter section six-one-three. Steve, you would like to present on this?
This is a annual housekeeping order that's in here. Each year, the finance director asks for the authority to transfer up to two percent. That's been the normal amount that we've utilized. I've worked with the finance director throughout the course of the year, watching the finances, are able to move funds inter-departmental as needed, but we're never allowed to exceed the overall budget.
And the amount this year is the same as?
Same as prior years, two percent.
Two percent of the whole budget. I know it's been, I was, you know, it's been a while since I've done this, so I just.
I'm actually.
It used to be an agenda item on the tab being for the first charter.
Right, so is there a motion?
I'm, I'm in order ahead of you. Yeah, this is, this is to receive the gifts. Alright, that's, that's.
You know why? I did it. I didn't, I um.
Yeah, you, you jumped.
I read the wrong one. I skipped it, I skipped an item because I had already crossed it off. I'm sorry. So let's just do the one that we are doing, the one that I called.
Three-fifty-one, yes.
Three-fifty-one. We'll, we'll have a, I'll have a motion to approve. Did you see what I did? I skipped one, guys, and nobody called me on it. I mean, really? Thanks, guys. Okay, so we're well, that is not an excuse, Deputy Mayor Hurley, so there you go. All right, so I will ask for a motion to approve twenty-one dash three-five-one dash zero-one and then I will go back. So do I have a motion?
A movement.
Motion by Counselor Tuttle. Is there a second? Second, second by Deputy Mayor Hurley. Any more discussion? All those in favor, show of hands? Motion is unanimous of all those present. Okay, I'll go back up to twenty-one dash three-five-two dash zero-one. Order to authorize the city to expend, in addition to the amounts otherwise raised and appropriated under this budget for the city purposes, any unanticipated unbudgeted surplus, gifts, grants, bequests, device, devices, or revenues from any other sources. Steve?
So as this came from prior legal counsel and it's continued forward, it allows you to accept any other sources of revenues that might come to the city throughout the course of the year. We've had gifts given to the city. It might be grants that are, have not yet been anticipated or budgeted for for this, for this year. As those come forward for the year, the council can receive those and so vote to expend those resources once available.
Thank you. Motion to approve?
Motion. Go ahead.
Who stepped? I'm sorry. Okay, a motion by Counselor Martell and a second by Counselor Stackpole. Any more discussion? Seeing no other discussion, I'll have a show of hands of all those in favor. That is unanimous of all those present. Okay, twenty-one dash three-four-nine dash zero-one. Ordered to vote on whether to amend the twenty-one-twenty-two school budget to include the final edition school EPS funding amount of nine-hundred-and-sixty-one-thousand-four-hundred-and-ninety-three dollars and thirty-three cents based on ED two-seventy-nine, the essential programs and services state calculation for funding public education. Total subsidy is twenty-nine million, seven-hundred-and-thirty-six thousand, nine-hundred-and-thirty-six dollars and forty-five cents, which is one-hundred-and-ninety-eight thousand, one-hundred-and-twenty-four dollars and forty-five cents more than previously voted. Do I have a motion to approve?
A movement.
Motion by Counselor Tuttle and a second by Counselor Stackpole. I just love these quick motions, guys. Any more discussion? I think this is pretty clear. We're accepting more money. So.
And, and I think it, it should be noted, Superintendent pointed this out that this was, some of this money was anticipated, but the, the decision was by the administration and will include the, the school board on it to, to allow this to just roll in to reduce property taxes. So I, I think they deserve some credit, recognition or credit for, for that action.
Any other discussion or comments?
I think this is the first block, isn't it? I remember doing this.
May very well be the first, yeah.
Well, they're not usually the, have such large ass.
Yeah, this is, this is, of course, a very unusual funding year all the way around, so. However, they could have spent it. They could have come up with a way to spend a hundred and ninety-eight thousand, come back to us and said, this is what we're gonna do, so.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. I don't see any further discussion. A show of hands, please, of all those in favor. That is a unanimous vote of all those present. Okay, twenty-one dash three-five-eight dash zero-one. Order to assign the additional duties to the Department of Administration contained within the job description of communications coordinator to include communications and marketing strategies, public information messaging, community relations, media relations, issues management, and social media and web presence management as hereby attached and authorized. Could you just do a short presentation on this, Steve, and then I'll ask for a motion to approve?
Yeah, so the necessary action by the city council tonight is to amend the Department of Administration by adding those job duties pursuant to the charter. Those job duties would be assumed by the communications coordinator position for which a draft job description is included in the packet. City did, so the city council had put forward a hundred thousand dollar placeholder early in the budget process that was previously under the growth council, was then moved to administration. Went through the budgeting process and the council processes, the decision was made to hire a full-time position dedicated to the, the communications and marketing aspect of the city. Upon researching the best job description for that, we came, came up with a communications coordinator because it's a recognized job, job title for both educational purposes as well as within the market. It allowed us to glean from the various job postings throughout the state, pay scales for communications coordinators. We also did a search, also did the majority of this, search for other communities that had, other cities that already had a communications coordinator. We gleaned their job descriptions and used that to compile the starting basis for ours. Examining marketing versus communications directors slash coordinators positions, the communications coordinator is brought forward as that being predominantly used for nonprofit and or governmental entities, seeking to establish a communication flow with people that they're serving and the dissemination of information is less about the marketing of a particular for-profit product. So all of that work was compiled. The job description is, is in there this evening. If you hereby vote to establish those added job duties, you also will be incorporating that job description. We would then go forward and advertise that position immediately and we could hire as soon as the start of October.
So prior to any discussion by the council, do I have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve.
A motion by Deputy Mayor Hurley.
Second.
Second by Counselor Martell. Discussion by the council.
This has been a long time coming.
I know.
Excited, really. Go ahead. There's some people looking for the job.
Counselor Martell, I mean, excuse me, Counselor Hanselman.
I just want to clarify, Steve, in the financial impact portion, the seventy-five thousand of growth council, I understand that those are funds still available for marketing at the city level? Or is it within, I guess, a clarification, is it, is it growth council directed or is it city-based?
So the city council had put forward a, an initial sum of money that the growth council was utilizing on the marketing aspect of that. The resulting balance of that is seventy-five thousand, so those funds are still there, there and can be redirected by the council for marketing purposes or other purposes as you may so deem appropriate. Financial analysis that I did, knowing that there's a hundred thousand dollars budget this year, when we did the market analysis, it places the salary for our city pay scale at a B-one, which is this annualized salary of fifty-two thousand three-sixty-seven. When I include the full, fully burdened cost of the benefit package, assuming that the individual might take as high as a family plan, the fully burdened cost of that position would be ninety thousand four-hundred-and-ninety-six dollars for the year. Knowing that we would not place anybody into that position till any, any earlier than October first of this year, looking at a nine-month cost of that fully burdened cost, again, if they're assuming the family medical plan would be sixty-seven thousand eight-seventy-two. That frees up thirty-two thousand one-hundred-and-twenty-seven dollars worth of resources to establish the office, furniture, get the computer systems in place. We anticipate having that position housed on the suite three-oh-one adjacent to my office. The space available there, it also has a large screen TV in there that would be great for working on media presentations and other elements. We've talked extensively internally as to what this would be for all departments having access to this communication coordinator as well as the various levels of internal and external communications that the person would be put in charge with. One of which would be to, to standardize a report to the city council on a regular basis following the activities of our department. Becomes time-sensitive and difficult to do for, for myself alone. The next level would be a communication, standardized communication going out to our residents to increase satisfaction with services by the dissemination of information. And then the third element of that would be the external marketing of, of our city to businesses as well as residential clients to attract, assist us with business retention, attraction and recruitment of people to live in our community, so.
Sufficient. Any other discussion? There is a motion on the table and a second. Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor, show of hands. Unanimous of all those present. Thank you. Twenty-one dash three five six dash zero one. Ordered to establish the position of Small Business Advocate within the Sanford Regional Economic Growth Council pursuant to subsection two zero five point three. Of the Sanford City Count, City Charter. Is there, um, do you want, would you like to just do the same thing, present and then we'll have a motion?
So this is not dissimilar from the Communications Coordinator. This is the establishment of a new job description. A new concentration as, as a small business advocate. As has been negotiated in the memorandum of understanding with the Industrial Development Corporation and the reconfiguration of the Growth Council. And their pending changes to the bylaws. The city requested that the corporation be comprised of an executive director. Mr. Nyman that was here this evening and that the second position, as opposed to being an administrative position solely. That the position of Small Business Advocate would be created. That is now, a job description is attached herein. The Economic Development Committee for the, the city council worked on that extensively. And it combines not only the, some of the job duties formally assumed by the administrative position, but puts a high concentration. On small business development to work with entrepreneurs in our community. To assist them in the initial inquiries about permitting, help guide them through that process. And be a liaison between the Growth Council Office, that position. And people as they're coming forward needing business licenses or the permits.
Do I have a motion to approve?
So move, Madam Mayor.
A motion by Counselor Hanselman and a second by Counselor Martell. Any other discussion? All those in favor by show of hands. That is unanimous of all those present. Thank you. Twenty-one dash three five three dash zero one. Ordered to amend the city council rules of procedure to incorporate a policy for remote participation in public meetings. And public proceedings pursuant to one MRSA section four zero three B. There are a motion to approve.
No move, Madam Mayor.
Motion by Counselor Tuttle. Second by Counselor Martell.
Got a question.
I'm gonna allow, um, did, we did have the public hearing, so I am entertaining questions, Counselor Tuttle.
I know that Counselor Stackpole and I had talked about in case where a counselor might be out of town. Or, or someone would be in Augusta or on vacation. If it would be possible for them to Zoom for a council meeting, it really would be appropriate. Cause we all have busy lives and I think it would be a good process of communication. Make sure that all of us have access to the council meeting and to be able to do our job. So I, I know that Bob and I did talk about that and maybe he might want to reiterate that, Bob, is that.
Yeah, that, I mean, that's essentially what we talked about. It, more so if you're, you know, I, I'm, I'm not, um.
Well, if you and Moose are walking.
Right.
And whatnot.
Alright.
Alright.
That was short.
But anyways, yeah. So I, I, you know, I'm not, I'm not talking about, you know, clearly we have an obligation as, as we can, as much as we can to be here. But life kind of gets in the way. I, I also think that if you're on vacation and you're in another state. Maybe visiting family or whatever that might be, those things are kind of hard to schedule that with a pre-arrangement, maybe you could participate.
I think that one of the, in my, it's my understanding, the state law allows that kind of participation for temporary absences. We did have that discussion at the Subcommittee that that would include. For example, Counselor Representative Tuttle having to be in Augusta on a Tuesday night. Having had session in that day and not being able to get back for a meeting, and I think that's entirely appropriate. I guess, I think that if you're in town, you're not sick, you know, you know, and, and to be clear, we need a quorum sitting here at this table. It may not be what everybody want, thought that it would allow us to do. We were hopeful that the state law would allow us to do our Zoom subcommittees. And apparently, I think that what we're going to have to do is counselors may have to be in the conference room. And other people can Zoom in, so makes it more efficient for staff, which I think is totally appropriate. I am hopeful that we might be able to get a legislator to put in a little amendment to the state law. So that we could do Subcommittee meetings where there is no action to be taken and we're very clear about that. And I think that with all the clarification, that if you're having someone else Zoom in. If a counselor can Zoom in, then that means you have to be, have the ability for any member of the public to Zoom in. And I think that that is entirely appropriate. I mean, I brought up the issue of what if somebody decides they're going to spend four months, a counselor decides they're going to spend, you know, December through April in Florida.
Right.
I'm sorry, but I don't think that qualifies.
I completely agree with that. And I, and what, what, my thoughts are, you know, it wouldn't even be occasional, you know. Okay. As an example, you know, my son's wife is going to have a baby in October.
There you go.
There may be an October meeting where I have a conflict, but clearly with the internet, I could still participate from the Philadelphia area. So those are the kinds of flexibility, I guess, or whatever. I'm, I'm certainly not talking about a repeated. Participation via, via.
I think that would qualify. And I, and that, and those are, those are things, if we have a question. I mean, one of the, one of the things that is clear in this policy is that you need to, as soon as you know that that's going to happen, that you need to be able to let. The, the mayor know that that is the case.
Yep.
Steve, would you like to weigh in on this?
No, I, I absolutely agree with that interpretation. I think that's an excellent direction to be taking and, and that is expressed within this policy. What I, what I wanted to express was, you know, was I'm struggling a bit with the technology tonight. We'll, we'll get that, that finished up, that make a smoother transition, may even go back to an operator with the technology as we deem necessary.
Was a lot of work for you tonight. No, I, I really, and I wanted to say that I really appreciate it because I know how much you like to be in the meeting and to do that. It's very just, it's very, it's hard. It's very difficult what you did this evening.
Well, what I, what I want to bring up is that especially for the, the Subcommittee. So, you know, we, we will have the elected officials, the three that are attending that or, or more as a work session. Have been present in the conference room, but that is set up as well, so the conference room can be zoomed out. What we desperately want to retain is the connectivity that we've had with citizenship over the last year and a half. Doing a hundred percent electronic meetings, the Zoom, they've, they've become accustomed to that. We've had higher levels of participation. For all levels at the, at the subcommittees as well as council meetings than, than we ever had before. And rather than like, like when we're working on specific task force, like the marijuana task force, that we would have. Nearly thirty people stuffed into a small room. You can have your elected officials in there and then Zoom in other people, so you're not overwhelming that particular space. So the city's made that concerted effort. We've made the investments, get the equipment in here, we're going to continue to bolster the systems here. Get it to run more smooth, smoothly for presentation materials and such. This is our first stab at it tonight, so thank you.
And could you tell from your thing this evening, how many people were actually on Zoom?
And we, we only have two, two people outside. We had, we had four when we started out.
Who's Zooming in?
Only two, two people right now.
Okay.
Zooming in. But the technology is if, if they raised their hand or wanted to interact and speak.
Thank you.
I can change your screen view. You'd be able to see them on your monitors in between you, upon the walls. Be able to hear them, talk with them in a two-way fashion.
I'm just grateful that we don't have to go backwards. Any other counselors who have anything they would like to add? Counselor Hanselman?
And, and this is just a clarifying question. In turn, so it includes elected and appointed officials, so we think about our budget committee, our planning board and so forth. That requirement to attend in person, so they're going to convert to back in person meetings as well.
Yes, okay. Right, it's, and it does, it was very specific, and I thought you addressed that in the public hearing, that it is the school board. It is the, it is any board that is in the charter or created by the, by the council.
Any of the elected and or appointed officials.
Elected, so planning board. I mean, and I know that there are issues that are going to be, but we, we need to work through that issue because I do not want to go backwards.
It's getting, it's getting the technology.
You know, I can say that sitting over here because I'm not sitting there, but I would be freaking out if I was sitting right here. I will admit that, right up front. Hey, I have learned an awful lot about this. If you had told me two years ago that I'd be sitting, I would have been the mayor doing Zoom meetings. Never would have believed it, so. Didn't even know what a Zoom meeting was.
So just as a, as a, this has gone viral. So I'm doing three camp association meetings in Millinocket this past Saturday, sitting outside of the library, trying to get the only wifi.
Alright.
In the region. Thank you, GWI. But, um, so that, that association of approximately a hundred people voted to go hybrid next year. So we've done two annual meetings by Zoom now. Now they want the big thing. They want the hybrid meeting. They want in-person in. So this, this isn't just here. It's not just statewide. I'm seeing this being propagated everywhere.
Well, I think that most boards want more participation. It's an opportunity to be able to let people know what's going on and we need to take advantage of it. Okay, so we have a motion and a second. We have not voted on this, right? Okay, so seeing no further discussion, with a show of hands, everyone in favor? That is unanimous of all those present. Thank you. Geez, what time is it? Oh my gosh, guys, it's only quarter to eight. Counsel. Alright, count, counselor member comment.
Go back and make for a pizza.
There it is.
Alright, counselor member's comment. Counselor Martell?
Oh, I just wanted to say, um, it was nice to be able to meet in person with the public as well. And I think that, um, having the hybrid meetings will make it more efficient and moving forward and allow for some more participation. So I think that's a, a very good thing.
Counselor Tuttle?
I'd agree with Counselor Martell. This is the first live meeting we've had, Madam Mayor. How long?
You're in three months?
A year.
March? Was it March?
Yeah, well, I'd need to march to set all the rules.
Well, we did.
March of twenty twenty.
It's much better. I was starting to really get very sick of the Zoom. After a while, it's very much a better in person. And I, I know I had talked to John Freer, the cameraman that we had had for a number of years. And I wanted to thank him for his years of service to our community. And I know I talked to him today and, uh, John, I, I just wanted to thank you for, you know, doing the job you did. And I want to congratulate Chief Connolly for the years of service and newly appointed Chief Craig Anderson. When I saw his resume, I noticed that he also majored in athletics in high school, something that I could identify with. After graduation, you say, ma, what am I going to do now? But he had his mother there, so. Craig, congratulations. I think we did a lot of good things this evening, Madam Mayor.
Counselor Hanselman?
Uh, thank you. I'll echo Counselor's sentiments. It's exciting to be back in person and appreciation to City Manager Buck for all his efforts. It does look like NASA over there. I mean, it's a pretty impressive setup. And then I don't often make public comments with their personal nature, but being that I'll be in executive session tomorrow evening. I do want to wish my husband a happy twentieth anniversary, which is officially tomorrow. So, thank you.
We'll have a party.
With some really good cake.
I know.
Counselor Stackpole?
Uh, yeah, just want to say it's great to be back in person. And, um, that's all I have to say, you know, it's, it's great to be back.
Deputy Mayor Hurley?
On the record, I just want to say, I was coming from the mayor's game, which is why I look so horrible tonight. So the people watching this, you know, fifteen years from now, know that it was because of the concession sale was very hot this evening. But I'm sorry, it was a little, almost, I was skated it at the very end. I'm sorry for that. And I just wanted to say, um. Thank you to Tom Connolly for his years of service. I know, you know, it's pretty busy in here. But I've had the opportunity, you know, chat with him quite a bit and I had the opportunity to see his wife at the emergency room, where she works as an RN with several of my tenants. Always lovely to have her there when I went in with a tenant. So, you know, it's sad to see people leave your community, but I'm excited for them in the early days. I think they'll have a nice time.
Thank you to Deputy Mayor Hurley. And I just have a couple of comments. I also want to echo the comments about thanking Chief Connolly and wishing him luck in the future. I was actually on the council when we hired Chief Connolly, so it's kind of like a full circle for me. And I want to wish Chief Anderson all the best. And I also wanted to remind people about the Springvale Farm Walk on Sunday. I think they start serving breakfast from eight to nine thirty, but if you don't get there early, it will be all sold out. They're having picking tables outside if the weather cooperates. You don't have to walk. There's like a couple of different routes that you can take. So one person could park somewhere and you could do it. I think that, I mean, unless you're like really energetic and you want to do the whole thing, which I think is way too much, but, and you should. Right, and bring, I've done it a couple of times. It's really fun. And bring a backpack and some money because every farm that you go to will have something for you to buy. And you just really will be angry if you don't have the proper stuff with you to buy this, to buy and store and carry it. Um, future agenda items. Counselor Martell?
Uh, nothing at this time.
Counselor Tuttle? Counselor Hanselman? Counselor Stackpole?
All set.
Deputy Mayor Hurley?
Sat.
And I am all set. I will declare us adjourned. Thank you all.